... developing division meeting for Wednesday, March 12th. The order, please stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Malowski.
Mr. Tippin.
Here.
Mr. Conley.
Present.
Mr. Troxel.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Getzler.
Present.
Attorney Oshin.
Present.
Chief Cruzan.
Here.
Deputy Chief Patterson.
Here.
Chief Dalling.
Here.
And Deputy Chief Segret.
Present.
Okay, I can't, I can't see that far on this side, okay. Uh, Mr. Pinter.
Here.
Mr. Hewitt.
Here.
Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Robert Teo.
Present.
Janice Malinowski, present.
Yes. Minutes of the February 12th, 2014 public meeting, pleasure of the board. So, motion. Second any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five to zero. Claims, any additional claims, Mr. Malinowski?
No additional claims.
Pleasure of the board. Move the vote.
Move to pay claims as presented.
Second. Motion in the second any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five to zero. Correspondents, Mr. Bowman.
No correspondence.
Any reports from the staff? Council members? There is no old business, move on to new business. Consider approval of invoice from Indiana Department of Transportation for the town's shareable portion of the financial improvement project for one hundred fifty-two thousand three hundred sixty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents. Mr. Bowman?
This is the town's portion of the Romanoff that will be, uh, project that will be let through by Avenue Seventy-Seven. Uh, that's under HSIP grant, it's a ninety-ten grant, this, this number reflects our contribution.
Thank you. Pleasure of the board. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a start date, Mr. Hewitt?
No, we don't yet. Uh, that will be coming in the next couple of weeks.
Mr. President. So, do we have a motion in the second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five to zero. At this time, I'll take any business from the floor regarding redevelopment. Any business from the floor regarding redevelopment? Any business from the floor regarding redevelopment? This meeting is adjourned, we will now move into the waterworks. Good evening, I'd like to call the order, the Waterworks Board meeting for Wednesday, March 12th. Roll call will be the same roll call, mine is Mr. Conley and Mr. Troxel. Minutes of the February 12th public meeting.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero. Claims, any additional claims, Mr. Malinowski?
No additional claims.
Pleasure of the board.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero. Correspondents, uh, Mr. Bowman on Waterworks?
No correspondence.
No correspondence. Any reports, staff, on water? Board members? No reports. There's no new business, no old business. At this time, it'll be business from the floor regarding waterworks. Any business from the floor regarding waterworks? This meeting is adjourned, we'll get to the utility board meeting. I'd like to call the utility board meeting for Wednesday, March 12th. Roll call will add Mr. Conley and Mr. Troxel back to the roll call. Minutes of February 12th public meeting.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Claims, Mr. Malinowski, any additional claims?
No additional claims.
Mr. President, I should make a motion to approve claims as presented.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Correspondents, uh, any correspondence, Mr. Bowman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, due to the extreme weather, we've had several, uh, utility customers that have experienced frozen water lines. Um, the practice of the water department is if that water flows, it's a break outside or the water flows outside, that, uh, in that case, there, it does not impact the sanitary sewers and adjustment would be warranted. Anytime those adjustments need to be made, I would ask the utility board member, I have three residences that experienced broken water lines that did not impact the sanitary sewers. Uh, one was at fifteen seven Camerac Ride, uh, the second one was at, uh, sixty-two fifty-four Pershing Road. And the third one was at sixteen twenty-nine Shaver. I have requested that the utility board authorize an adjustment by the reduction of their sewer utility bill to just their average, other than, uh, what actually went through the year. They'll pay for the water portion, if it went through the year, it would act as a sewer portion, only average.
Mr. President, Mr. Troxel.
Question. Mr. Bowman, these residences, they've corrected their, uh, the situation that warranted the, uh, fault in the first place.
I agree with both of my opinions, it was corrected, we're very sure of it.
Mr. President, based on the, uh, report from Mr. Bowman, um, and his review of these items here, I, uh, make a motion that, based on his discretion here, that we go ahead and set those averages as he suggested for residents.
Thank you, Mr. Troxel, we have a motion.
A second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? No further discussion, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Uh, reports, any more reports regarding utilities? What stamp? Any reports from council members utilities? Will move on to the old business, there's no old business, will move on to new business, new business, resolution two thousand fourteen dash two, providing for temporary loan of funds of the town's shareable accounting in the year two thousand fourteen. Mr. Malinowski?
This is, uh, something that's done generally about this time of the year in respect to these funds running negative cash balances until we get our tax money for the, uh, first distribution June thirtieth. So, do you want me to read through these? I mean, I can, but alone, uh, the general fund was one point five million, ambulance fund, two hundred thousand, park and rec fund, two hundred thousand, police pension fund, sixty thousand, redevelopment district fund debt service, five thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars and eighty-three cents, Geo Bridge fund debt service, five thousand one hundred five dollars sixty-four cents, two thousand twelve four park district fund, sixty-six thousand, two eighty-one thirty-two, two twenty-ten park district fund, nine thousand four twelve thirty-nine, and the building corp, please, sixteen thousand one hundred eighty-six dollars and eighty cents. Total loan to borrow, uh, is two million sixty-two thousand seven hundred eleven dollars and ninety-eight cents from the wastewater improvement fund, which, uh, now stands cash wise at about four point eight to five million.
Mr. President, Mr. Troxel had a question for Secretary.
Yes.
Janice, um, how do we get tax from June?
Yes.
Will we make any payment on this loan at that time or over the years?
Um, it depends what the draw would be, I generally draw around forty-eight to fifty-two percent. If I see that we could pay some or all the back and start over in July, I will do that. Otherwise, I did clearly state that this could go through December thirty-first, at that time then, everything needs to be paid back. We get a first draw June thirtieth and then the second one, December thirty-first or sooner. We've been pretty good at collecting from the county by, um, I want to say around December twenty-seventh, December twenty-eighth, and last year, I think I mentioned at a previous meeting, we collected our tax rate at nineteen point five three percent.
Mr. President, Mr. Troxel, that being mentioned, I go ahead to approve, uh, resolution two thousand fourteen dash two, which is a temporary loan of funds of the town of Sherville, Indiana, two thousand fourteen, as presented by Secretary. I'll second with discussion. Uh, Mrs. Malinowski, just so that I'm clear, we're, the town of Sherville is borrowing two million dollars from the utility of Sherville.
That's correct, the wastewater utility.
So, we're not borrowing from a bank or?
No, and, and there would be no interest cost to the town, and we're able to do this because right now, we're at about a little under five million cash in our wastewater.
And it, we do this every year, to my memory, and it seems as though the number's going down, so it appears that we might be picking up some cash balances, would that be correct?
You're right, Mr. Tippin, Mr. Bowman and I have been working on, um, at the end of the year, we really like to bring those cash balances to twenty-five percent, right now we're at about sixteen percent, so we're working on that pretty feverishly every year. Um, that definitely brings up a point that I had an interview with a member of the standard court committee for a bond rating. I believe that took place about ten to fourteen days ago, and I still haven't heard back from them, but I was questioned on every one of these funds, we went through the fund balance, and they look at those cash balances wholeheartedly because that can project whether our rating is gonna stay the same, decrease or increase, so I'm hoping our balances keep continuing to increase every year, so hopefully we can even get a better than a double A minus rating.
It appears you're doing a very good job.
Thank you.
I thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Tippin, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. At this time, we'll open up business from the floor regarding utilities. Any business from the floor regarding utilities? No business from the floor, this means adjourned, we'll move into the town council meeting.
Towing the town council meeting for Wednesday, March 12th, order. Um, the roll call stays the same as utility board. Next item is minutes of the February 12th, 2014 public meeting, pleasure of the council members. So, move.
Second.
Motion in the second, any discussion in the minutes? Hearing seen on all, favors, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, posting sign. Minutes are approved. Any additional claims, Mr. Malinowski?
No additional claims at this time.
Pleasure of the, uh, claims from council members.
So, move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion.
Second.
Second, any discussion on claims? Seeing hearing on all, favors, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, posting sign, claims are paid. Correspondents, uh, no correspondence. Staff members, anything to report at this time? Did you have to report anything to me at this?
No report.
Police chief, fire chief.
No report tonight. No report tonight.
Mr. Chairman. I have one question for Mr. Hewitt, and this is a crazy question to be asking in March about how are you going to solve?
We, uh, that's, that's my daily phone call, first thing is to, to try to get some more delivery, uh, we still are having problems with Cargill bringing us salt. We are okay, uh, this latest event here, the last, uh, twenty-four hours has, uh, put a dent in what we have available, but we're, we're still in decent shape. Uh, I will be making phone call to, uh, Cargill, trying to get some more delivered as soon as possible.
Thank you, Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'll turn it.
Um, I do have a question for Mr. Bowman. Mr. Bowman, did we ever get that letter constructed, uh, for the state, uh, the money is owed to us, or?
They, they actually, uh, have a program where you can take over, taking care of the state highway. Uh, I was instructed to meet with our, with the NDOT, uh, director of the Port District and discuss the, uh, just got it done. So, I have no, I mean, there's no way to build them directly that I know of, but there is a way to generate to a agreement with them or promote this and follow, so I don't know what the terms that are, I have to dig up that information, I didn't realize that they have such program, but, you know, take the responsibility of, of the state highway through your community and then they will turn compensation to it.
Well, we probably should do that, I saw the, our common plows again today, dropping plows, I'm, I'm currently cleaning things up, so, you know, phenomenal job, but, uh, again, we're doing the state's work and no compensation at this point. I understand what you're saying, but that still doesn't take care of all the hours that we go ahead.
It's when I have the votes, that's something we can do.
Okay, thank you. Council members, anything else? Okay, at this time, I'm opening up any public comments regarding agenda items at this time. Yeah, the agenda, you want to make any comments on anything? Yes, sir, coming up, state your name and address at the microphone.
George Marriott, nine fifty-one Sherwood Lake Drive, apartment four B. I'd like to comment on agenda item D, the Congressman Peter Jake Dischwaski regarding the extension of South Shore rail line. I'm opposed to using any of sharebills, economic development funds, to go towards the, uh, local share of extending South Shore. Uh, when this one and a half percent income tax was discussed last year, there was no mention of any portion of it going towards the South Shore, and all of a sudden, uh, we're presented with, uh, I would say, demand, it seems like we're being bullied, into giving some of our tax dollars to something that wasn't agreed to. I believe that this money that was get, uh, was collected from this, uh, one and a half percent tax should be used solely for the town's shareville, for maintenance of roads and infrastructure. Uh, also, I'd like to know if there's at, an act, there must be an actual agreement somewhere, but I haven't seen or read it, I don't know what's in it, all I've heard is, uh, half a percent, or one-third of the economic development funds and thirty-four percent. Uh, when you say a percentage, you don't really know how much you're going to give to that entity because the amount of tax will vary from year to year, so you don't know, and we haven't even had one whole year of collecting tax, so we don't know how much that is. Also, I would like to know if there's an exit agreement, if we do agree to give money to the, uh, other party, whoever that may be, is there an exit agreement? Uh, if you're familiar with Port County and the RDA, uh, several years ago, Port County Council wanted to drop out of the RDA, but there was no mechanism in the, uh, legislation to get out of it, so they're stuck, and now they're facing a five million dollars that have to sit in their budget, they're cutting jobs, they're cutting services, they may have to raise income tax, but they're still supporting the RDA. I know that everybody's read all the articles in the newspaper, and it seems like the most enthusiastic backers are big business. Uh, while we've got, the tax, individual taxpayers got one and a half percent additional tax, which is fifty percent, business got, uh, elimination of the inventory tax, lording of the corporate income tax, uh, reduction in corporate personal property, but yet not one of these companies has pledged any money towards the South Shore. Now, this may be a novel idea, but maybe we should be asking business to contribute something to the South Shore, because they're the ones that say it's gonna be so good for our region, they should, you know, be more than happy and back something like that that'll benefit them, because all that supposedly big money from Chicago's gonna come in here and people are gonna be spending money in Indiana businesses. Um, it would be nice to see some of the businesses do more than cheerlead, and the thing is, none of these or business organizations, uh, is elected by the individual voters. They're all, the forum is private, one region is private, the editorial board of the Times is private, but yet they're asking us to donate some of our tax money to a project that we really don't know anything about. And I look at this, something like, uh, what Nancy Pelosi said about the Fort of Carrot, you have to vote for it to see what's in it. So, I think until you get some definite answers to how much money and is it, what is the total agreement, I think that, uh, that this matter should not go forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for your comments. Any other public comments on agenda items? Seeing hearing on, continue on. There's no old business before us, new business. There are council members, we have new business, which is ordinance number eighteen fifty, and ordinance pending zoning ordinance number seventeen ninety-seven, has amended the same as being the ordinance classifying regulating and restricting the location high area involved in use of building structures and use of lands in town shareville and for set purposes dividing the town into districts and all matters related thereto. This is a land development corp, nine oh one Mer Street. Uh, Mr. Bowman, can you brief us on this?
Yes, Mr. Troxel, this is a rezoning, uh, was, uh, in the plant commission this month, it was a rezoning in Fulton space, it was, uh, agricultural land to our one residential, uh, it's, I think about seventeen acres. The, it comes to you, um, with a favorable recommendation from the plant commission of six to zero.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Schmidt.
Uh, Mr. Bowman, that, this is on the east side of the road, uh, Burr and Ninety-First.
Yes, just north of Ninety-First, next to the Pinefield, actually a joint, Pinefield subdivision.
Mr. President. I was, uh, present at the plant commission meeting, there was a residence, they're putting a joint subdivision, um, expressing a drainage issue, so you satisfied that those were addressed by the developer?
They were not, that will be vetted through the subdividing process. This is just a rezoning request, uh, we've been in contact with the developer and his engineer, and they're, we're trying to set the meeting schedule for the plant commission, they, they haven't done the engineering on the subdivision yet. I know that, uh, we did collect email addresses from some of the residents after that meeting and pledged to them, and we would have another study session where that would be reviewed. Uh, we've talked to the developer today and tried to get that scheduled, but, uh, I have not seen the engineer.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
So, Mr. Ross, so are they, is the only reason for us to take action tonight is to change the zoning from Attic Hope to our one?
Yes. With that being said, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept. We have motion to accept. But, uh, ordinance for eighteen fifty is within the. Second. In the second, any discussion? Hearing seen on all, favors, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, posting sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next item, which is ordinance number eighteen fifty-one, which is ordinance pending town ordinance eighteen eleven, being the ordinance requiring project labor agreements for town shareable projects, all matter related thereto.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Schmidt.
This is a, this is an ordinance that's been, actually been approached to the council since probably like September by, by Mr. Paul Witter, representing the building trades, and, and what, what they're asking, or what they were asking was, the town's shareville has a project labor agreement now, when we build a major project in town, we, uh, we, we sign a PLA agreement, a project labor agreement, and also use unionized labor, like when we built the new park building recently, that was all done unionized and stuff, and if we were to go to build another large building, it'd be the same way, because that's the agreement we have. And what they're asking now is to expand that ordinance to the fact that when the town, um, has a, has a project that's, that's being used in the TIFF district and is using TIFF money, um, or if there was a tax abatement given to someone that was had a project in town, that they also will be required to have PLA agreement and to, and to use, and to use unionized labor. I totally agree with it, I think it's a good ordinance. Um, the ordinance that we have in front of us, I think needs to be tweaked a little bit, um, to, to, to mod, have it modified to say that, but I definitely am in favor that if a project is being done in our town with TIFF dollars, similar to the project on Shawson Main, and is using, and is in TIFF district, or is using a tax abatement, then I think they should sign a PLA agreement and use the local unionized labor, which is what they're at, what the building trades are asking for.
Mr. Schmidt.
And that, for right now, that is just for discussion.
Any other discussion at this time from any council members? Mr. President, I, I would just consider, um, we're in the beginning stages of putting together our redevelopment plan, uh, that perhaps the votes, that's completed, that we would consider any PLA agreement, or even make that part of the redevelopment plan. But I think we're, yeah, then we're jumping ahead of ourselves a little bit by approving a PLA prior to, uh, the redevelopment plan being completed. Any other comments? I, yeah, I agree with, uh, Councilman Conley. Had, amending our existing PLA agreement would, the way it's written here, I'm not sure what Councilman Schmidt is talking about, when he talks about tweaking, but the way this reads to me is that P, a PLA agreement would be enforced for all permitted projects within the TIFF district. I, I read it saying that, that's how I read it, now, now I'm not, I mean, we've only had, to my knowledge, we have only, uh, distributed TIFF funds to one project, and that shops on main, I don't believe we've ever distributed TIFF monies to any other project. And I will agree that when it comes to assessing risk, when, when we're essentially, uh, we're not, we didn't give them money, we, we loaned them money against future property tax dollars that, that's actually paid back to the town, it's not as though we gave them any money. Uh, the others, and using, since that's the only example we have, and I think it's a good one, first of all, due to the size of the project and, and the risk of completion of the project, I agree with Councilman Schmidt that, uh, labor, organized labor is the better option to protect us, so that we don't get halfway through a project and it's not able to be completed. However, I do not believe that we should consider all projects to have that same requirement. I, I think you also have to consider that, again, using the example of Shawson Main, eighty percent plus of the funds invested in that project were invested by the developer, twenty percent were essentially a loan by the town against further receipt, so, I mean, the town is really not a major stockholder in that project, so, uh, however, I, I would like to see, as Councilman Conley said, part of the redevelopment plan that we're putting together, when we're making a determination as to whether or not a project is worthy of, of TIFF dollars or abatement, that labor be a consideration, I think it should be a, a checkbox and say, do we feel the, the need to raise the buyer, uh, for labor and discuss that with the developer at that time? I, I just, I don't, I don't believe in, uh, across the board, one size fits all type legislation in this manner, uh, and I also, although sometimes I, I might change my mind on this, but I don't like to encumber future councils with this type of a legislation. I think by putting it in the redevelopment agreement, whoever's on the council in the future has the opportunity to make the decision whether and how they feel that project should be managed in terms of labor and measuring the risk on behalf of the town at the time that they're on the council. So, I, I, I would just, I, I would request that we think about moving this to, uh, the redevelopment plan and taking it seriously, I'm not talking about pushing it aside or, or not doing it, I'm talking about make, putting, putting it as part of a working document that we can look at on a regular basis. look at on a regular basis for projects in the future.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Schmidt.
I respect Mr. Tippy's opinion, but I have to disagree because I would, I still think that when a, when a company, or a developer comes in with a project and this is in the ordinance form, it's very simply easy to hand him the ordinance and say, this is the ordinance, this is in the ordinance form. Therefore, if you're, if you're asking for TIF dollars or you're asking for a tax abatement, then you will have to follow the ordinance, and that way it's upfront and there's no negotiations, there's no chance of favoring one guy over the other guy or nothing. It's a strict, in the ordinance, here's the ordinance, this is what we have to follow. I'm also willing to put a, a dollar amount in case there was like some small project in town that, that was, that was granted an abatement or, or a, or TIF money and say, put a tax, put an amount of like one hundred thousand or one hundred fifty thousand dollars as a low amount to, to accommodate something that might come across the board on a small project. Those type of projects usually don't ever get TIF money, and they usually don't get proj, uh, don't get project labor agreements anyway, but that's something that we, we should consider. So I would have to think that it would be more important to have that upfront in the ordinance form to give to the developer.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Mr. Oshin.
I want to make clear to the council that the ordinance before you does not say what you all are talking about. The ordinance before you proposes to amend your ordinance number 1811 so that for all construction alteration, improvement or repair projects applied for and permitted within TIF districts within the town, as well as parcels of real property granted tax abatement treatment in the town, project labor agreements as required by 1811 shall be required. And I don't think that's what you're talking about. You're talking about incentive or the incent, incentive of developments, improvements, rehabilitation within your TIF district, or where tax abatement treatment is sought, considered and proposed by you. This ordinance was drafted based upon the model used elsewhere in Lake County. And this is, this is a mandatory, this ordinance, not the ordinance perhaps that needs tweaking or adjusting or modification for what you're talking about. This ordinance is a mandatory across the board, and it solely takes in a building permit application for any improvement within the TIF district. She has to hand the applicant 1811 and say, you need to meet this. That, that's what this ordinance does.
Even if they do not receive any type of offer of TIF dollars?
That's correct.
Okay, that's the way I understand it. That's the way I understand this written.
That's how I drafted the ordinance, that's why I was asked to present it to you for your dialogue consideration.
Hey, Mr. Oshin, in the paragraph above that, it says, the uses of TIF district finance, financed projects. So I was, I, I read this ordinance as using financed projects, so, so in my, in my thought after, after tonight, after, after your comments, you say that that's different, then I don't have a problem with changing this ordinance to say for district financed projects. And that, and I think that's the goal, the whole thing. The whole thing is, when there's TIF dollars and privileges through the TIF district given to a developer or a tax abatement, and shareville's not real big on tax abatements, but we have done a few over the last twenty years, I think there should be a PLA agreement with unionized labor. Therefore, I'm willing to, I'm willing to make a motion to pass this ordinance with the change that, that says TIF district financed projects. And have, and have you draw up a new ordinance stating that, Mr. Oshin?
Does that form up a motion?
Uh, no, I mean, if there's further discussion, I'd rather hear further discussion before I make a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Um, Mr. Oshin, what other cities or towns here in the county have this type of ordinance?
To my knowledge, Merrillville. There may, there may be one or two others.
And so, what I was hearing from Mr. Schmidt, is there a possibility then in that ordinance that we would tweak it, that we can actually put dollar amounts, or, or union that would come into play to match what we use?
You could consider, and it is my understanding that that is what is in the initial stages, the perfect stages of being developed by way of policy, is your TIF economic funding policy. You could establish thresholds or parameters that would guide your direct use of TIF funded, or TIF funding, available TIF funding for projects on a case-by-case basis. I presume it would be a set of parameters that would allow you to custom provide or negotiate or present to project applicants public monies.
And I, and I do agree with, with you guys, I'm going to put it into redevelopment, that's another good thought. I, I personally think that we should maybe defer this so that we can get this onto a study session or something to really kind of, that's actually, and really get some thoughts and see what we're really at.
I agree. That is my opinion.
My, thank you. My comments, gentlemen, is that I do not believe that any project that goes in TIF district, when they get permitted, automatically has to sign a hundred labor agreement, if not getting funds. You know, our, our, our TIF area that we have, we've only, this is Councilman Tippy mentioned, we've only consented one area. There's a lot of areas. So if someone's come in that TIF district and built a building, they should be, have any reason that they have to sign a project labor agreement, I do believe that. Now, I also do believe that as we're moving forward with our redevelopment plan of our area, that something needs to be packaged in there for that. Whether or not we could move forward on a ordinance addressing PLA's and tax abatements, TIF funding in an ordinance, but also making reference to a redevelopment plan for that, that they're tied together, I think makes sense. Obviously, we're not ready to see, to move forward with that, there's a lot of discussion to be made, but I'm comfortable in putting on a study session to discuss that. Now, I know we're just, just starting our redevelopment plan in the area of which we'll be meeting with our consultant here very shortly, so probably, I'm guessing, and by looking at this, our consultants, the R group that they mentioned, a timeframe on this?
Actually, what I'm, we're going to do is we're going to start circulating, now that the committee numbers have been selected, is scheduling, you know, trying to set up a schedule where everybody can make the meeting, so that'll be the next step. I just know we're timed for Friday, so.
Are we thinking maybe in a sixty-day timeframe that we would have this completed?
Yeah, he's thinking we'll have four or five meetings, and you know, and he's, he's pretty much pushes it pretty fast, so I'm thinking the meetings would probably go on a three-week cycle. They give time for development of, you know, discussion into policy draft, and then once, and then, understand, once we get done with that, you know, enabling legislation will have to go through David. So then, a little, David will be, you know, will, will, as we get into a draft document, we'll vote a caution, and they'll, they'll draft the enabling legislation for the redevelopment.
Yeah, I just think that, that's a better plan for us right now. I mean, this is a good ordinance, and it may be good for some communities the way it sits. I do believe shareville's a unique, a unique community with potential for a lot of development, which will benefit law, benefit labor, and also benefit the town, and where we can make sure to continue with some positive and good development on areas. So, I believe that we should just, as it is on the agenda here, we should ask that if the, I guess we, we need to defer this for further discussion, is that being proper?
Yes.
So if there's a motion to defer this for further discussion and to come up with a, a more, a better resolution, if we work toward a redevelopment plan, I'd see that.
I'd like to make a motion to defer it. With, you know, the study session being scheduled, so having, you know, so that we can agree to discuss this whole time.
Is there a motion to defer? Oh, second. Second, any further discussion at this time? Seeing, hearing, none, all favor, is he saying aye? Aye, aye.
No.
Okay, four one.
Mr. Troxel?
Yes?
Just as a point, we have a pretty full agenda for the twenty-sixth of March, that we're applying on these required, I would add this for the enables for the session. Yes, okay.
That's fine. Next item is Resolution 2014 Nash Three, which is a joint resolution confirming and acknowledging agreements and commitments of the Lake County, Indiana officials pertaining to an interlocal agreement for consolidation of public safety answering points, all the most PSAs in Lake County, Indiana, authorizing and approving entry into a joint interlocal agreement for consolidation of public safety answering points in Lake County, Indiana, based upon such agreements and commitments of Lake County, Indiana officials and all matters related thereto. Gentlemen, as, as we know, we've been, been asked by the county officials to move forward with a joint interlocal agreement regarding consolidation of our nine one one system. We have had quite a bit of discussions over the last year regarding our concerns regarding how the consolidation would take place. With that, there were four communities that felt similar regarding getting some questions answered, and we had a meeting here approximately a couple weeks ago with some of county officials to answer some of those questions. We've asked our attorney, Dave Oshin, to take those answers and those points that were, we were questioning, and put them in a joint resolution form with the communities of Highland, St. John, and Cedar Lake. We received this joint resolution with those items in there, and I'm bringing up this point right now for discussion on this resolution before us, regarding the concerns that we had regarding this consolidation. So I'm opening up right now for any comments from the council members here.
Mr. President? I guess, I guess I'm going to start by saying, I don't think we've arrived at what I would call the ideal situation, but I think that we've arrived at a very acceptable situation and one that is probably the best for the town shareville based on all of the circumstances that come into play when you're trying to consolidate eighteen units of any type of government. I, and I want to thank the towns of Highland, Shareville, and St. John, I'm sorry, Highland, St. John, and Cedar Lake for taking the time. We've had numerous meetings on this to sort this out. We, we met with county officials, two members of each of the four councils met with the county officials who are on, members of the commission, I'm sorry, the commission attorney, the director, as well as one of the commissioners and two of the couns, county councilmen. And we, we came to what we think is an agreement. Our concerns were recognized and essentially agreed to regarding property taxes and hiring practices, and I won't go into all the details because they're, they're in the documents. But, but with that being said, I, I, I'm not going to make the motion now, everyone have a turn to comment, but I, I was on the working committee with Councilman Troxel, and I can tell you that, that this is, this is as good as it's going to get for consolidation for us right now, and I would hope that the council would consider approving this resolution.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. President, I would just like to acknowledge yourself and Councilman Tippy for all of your due diligence with this E nine one one program. You've represented us very well. The biggest concern, obviously being the financial concern, with shareville not being in its tax camps, we're vulnerable to potential property tax increase to fund in dark sight or any shortfall with the initiative. So, thanks to both of you again for moving this forward. Any comments?
So my comments, yeah, like I said, it was a long process, but we were looking out for shareable taxpayers and how the dollars were spent. The joint interlocal agreement did not clarify how those would be handled, and what we did was asked our county commissioners and county council members, and those are an eye on condition, you know, to actually explain that, how those would be handled, how it would affect our communities. So, we put those answers in writing from our meeting, and we're going to move forward with, hopefully, agreeing to this, this evening, so we can move this forward to the other communities, and if they agree to it, then we'll submit this to the, to the county commissioners.
And, Mr. President, I could just make one more comment. I know our, our public safety officials have attended a lot of these meetings. The action that we're proposing to take tonight is not to approve the interlocal agreement, but is to approve a resolution of understanding that is presented to all four of the outstanding communities, that we expect all four communities within the next, I don't want to commit for them maybe thirty days or so, to, to take action on this resolution, and assuming that all four communities accept the terms, which in, in the concept have already been agreed upon, but then we would, we would hope that we'd be able to move forward with the next step to actually sign on to the interlocal agreement.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Mr. Oshin, as far as your concern, has our question been answered?
To the best of everybody's ability to forecast what a new replacement, consolidated, integrated facility and initiative would be, I think so. Everything is in pro forma. Appropriate consultants with credentials have been retained finally after years, and it seems that the normal, regular consultants have been put to the side and professionals have been at the forefront in this last push over the last six months or so. Given this only, this initiative is complicated, sophisticated, requires saving function, and your council members who participated have had an incredible job, and you can put in the pedal, give the right answers, but to get the answers the best they can be given.
As a reference, as our dollar amounts, we're looking at, and, and, I believe the number we're looking at is close to our levy transfer that we had for our dispatch unit was close to three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars.
Between three seventy and three eighty-two.
Okay. And those are the dollars that will be transferred over to the consolidated nine one one center that we're doing up. We basically want to make sure that that's all we have to give, and there's nothing else that we were going to be tagged on to as we move forward. So, again, I also agree that we have a, a good understanding of what's, what's going to take place in the future, you know. So with that being said, pleasure to the council members.
President?
Yes?
There is one blank in this resolution that reflects the amount of time that it would take for the commencement of a reconfiguration or membership change in Lake County Public Safety Communications Commission. My recommendation would be a hundred and eighty days, the date of execution of this agreement for this resolution, but that's your call. Uh, Mr. President, I'll, I'll make the, the motion to approve the joint resolution with the amendment suggested by Terry Oshin.
There's been a motion with the amendment of a hundred and eighty days. A second and a second. Any additional discussion at this time? Hearing none, all favor, is he saying aye? Aye, aye. All the same thing. Hearing none, motion carries by two.
Okay, next item on the agenda is item number, item letter D, which is considered proposal by
by Congressman Peter Dusclis regarding the extension of the South Shore rail line. Gentlemen, obviously, we've, uh, this has been broken for us, uh, for the last thirty days here, and, um, I know we received the letters from the congressman, um, regarding our action on this, and, um, I wanted to bring it up today for consideration, discussion, um, and gathering thoughts regarding, uh, the proposal here. Um, am I like to start?
I'll go ahead and start. So I guess just to kind of revisit what's being asked of us, uh, with its thirty-four percent of our ceded funds, uh, toward the extension, um, we've got a lot of discussion amongst the council about, uh, we really haven't identified, uh, Shererville needs for the ceded funds, uh, as of yet, so we would obviously consider most of them for the town of Shererville first, uh, before we would commit, uh, a percentage of any, you know, toward the South Shore extension. Those discussions I assume will, will continue. Um, I guess a comment and a question, I did reach out to about a hundred residents just to kind of gauge their interest and opinion on, on the extension, providing all of the details in terms of what's being asked to be funded. Um, I got twenty responses, eighteen for, two against. Um, eighteen for Shererville, same concern about, you know, utilizing those ceded funds for us first, for the MRTs before we would, we would commit. Other positive just had to do with increased quality of life, um, providing revenue source and hopefully experience some, some continued growth, um, in our area. A couple who were against it just didn't feel it, you know, they thought that there was a decrease overall in ridership, um, they just simply just not needed really no other reason. Um, the question I have, it just, and I know it just can't be answered tonight because Nikte's not here, but looking at the, the January addendum of the West Corridor document, uh, in terms of the, the projected upgrades for the existing line, I guess they're projected at five hundred and ninety million dollars. Do we know if Nikte has the resources to cover the local match for those existing improvements? I guess that's a question we can ask, um, next week, the congressman. And the other questions I have are all operational, that really can only be answered by Nikte, 'cause I'm a writer as well, and I just haven't got many, many questions. That's all I have, thank you.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, are, are we still waiting on, um, some research numbers from, from Mr. Dusclis's office as far as ridership and how many people it affects in the town of Shererville and so on?
From our, our last study session, I believe we asked for some of those, uh, information resources, and Mr. Volpin, we received most of those or are we waiting so?
We, we did get some responses, and most of that's covered in, in the letter that you have. Uh, I, I don't know if the Nikte studies go community by community, and they, and they probably don't look at, you know, they can narrow it down just to Shererville or St. John, but more probably geographic to who would, who would be serviced by radius from where the, uh, where a station would be located. And, and I, I did include a copy of a Nikte report, uh, in each of your amendments tonight that I received from their meeting, uh, last June, which was last Nikte event that I think, I don't know if it's his last one that they had, it was the last public forum that they had.
Thank you. Any other comments? I would like to say, um, I do believe personally that an investment in, uh, this rail line, extending it right down to, to Dyer, this would be a benefit, uh, to our community, Shererville, um, to the greater area of Lake County, it would be a benefit, and as we gather some more information, um, we will, uh, look at that and see what portion of our ceded funds we would like to invest in as we move forward. Um, approximately, roughly, roughly, we're looking at, um, they're looking at eight million dollars to collect out of Lake County municipalities, and our thirty-four percent of our ceded funds come out to approximately two hundred and fourteen thousand.
Oh, two thirteen, four dollars maybe, four cents. And from what I gather, Mr. President, um, I believe in speaking with Mr. Lopez, the first payment would be due, I'm thinking February of twenty sixteen. I'd like to confirm that with him, but it would be due for a little while to enable us to build up a balance and see where we're at, not to ask for this money upfront, of course.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, is, is that for just for ten years?
I mean, I'm thinking they're looking at twenty-five to thirty years.
Mr. President, if I can make a comment, um, I'm still on the fence on this, so I'm glad we're not taking this to a vote tonight as to how much we're gonna come up with. I, I'm getting responses to, uh, living on the east side of the town of Shererville, I'm getting far more negatives, because I guess it's not quite as convenient for the residents of my ward to, uh, track to the train, but, um, the, the one recommendation that I would make, whatever amount, if in fact we do decide to give them out, is that the resolution that we adopt does not directly give the money to the RDA until the project is fully funded. And the, the reason I say that is because the federal funds are not approved, the state funds are not approved, and here we are, local guys. I mean, if, if the idea is to commit a percentage of our ceded funds to the RDA, and the project doesn't happen, I'm a little concerned about where those dollars go. So, that, that's all I would ask, is that we, somehow if we can do this with the Attorney Osh, escrow it somehow, or I don't know what, what they, how we would do that.
We may need to discourse with the congressman or his staff regarding the funding requirements and what it means to Nash, deposit, account, and build a fund. So there may be some grant, uh, conditions or, or terms and provisions that need to be considered.
Yeah, because my, my understanding, and I, I may have this wrong, 'cause this is all kind of due to all of us, but it kind of, it came at us kind of fast, but my understanding is that the, the RDA would be handling the, the local funds, and, and, and that, and that, I guess I'm taking a leap and thinking that we would then commit our funds to the RDA.
You really weren't giving all those details, so.
Right.
There isn't a detail work yet, I guess.
That, that's I'm just concerned.
But the commitments I believe that you filed fifteen, or, you know, by March thirty-first, this is for election beginning of two thousand fifteen.
And it also, I think, was mentioned that, um, if, uh, the local match of eight million dollars was not met by the communities committing, then what I understood those funds would then not be paying to go back to local communities. If I understood, um, that's the case, that's great. So if, if all you knew, you know, if six and a half million is committed by the communities, and there's still one and a half million dollar deficit, I'm not sure if eighty percent of the funding, then they can move forward with it, or if eighty, a hundred percent.
I thought Mark stated, though, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought Mark stated whenever these were needing to get the total cost was that, that's, uh, they would look for that money, but then, or, or, or funding.
They love the state.
Say that correctly, Josh.
I, I think he did talk about alternative services, but not much we can, I don't know what to read.
Did, as far as that March thirty-first deadline, is that just self-imposed deadline by the congressman?
That's the congressman's representatives who have the date, but, uh, we don't know how that again ties into the grant funding cycles that the congressman is working with. That's the only reason we can't tell if that's a force or a deadline, a committed deadline for funding. Most of the time with federal funding, we are at deadlines, you know that from, you know things that, 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 or.
And, 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 also, I, I see that, you know, I know Mark brought this up, too, about how from nineteen seventy to two thousand twelve, population dropped in states here by ninety-one-six percent, and, and like I did state to, from Mark, um, you know, personally, I am for the rail. Um, I think when people come into the tri-town area, they kind of look for the amenities of what Shererville and St. John and Dyer have to offer, um, you know, as far as, you know, safety, you know, as far as, uh, police and fire go, um, I think, you know, schools play a big role, and then I think the next thing is how close they are to, uh, you know, transport, uh, their jobs from here to Chicago. Um, and, and maybe that is a real good reason why, um, you know, population has dropped. So, um, in one way, I feel that it's a, it's a very good thing to, uh, bring this rail in.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, and Mr. Volpin, I was wondering if we could get a, uh, a report on how much money that the federal government has brought into Shererville for different projects and different grants over the last, say, ten years or so?
Councilman? I've actually requested that information with the congressman's office, uh, yesterday, so, um, she's getting that information.
Very good.
Can I ask?
I just wanted to add for you gentlemen, and I'm sure Bob and myself would be attending, I got notice today from the city of Holberg, Councilman Mr. David Dancent has, um, reserved and has been accepted by Mr. Lopez, and I believe Congressman Dusclis, that our sixteen-plus meeting on Friday, March twenty-eighth, uh, they will be presenting in regards to the South Shore extension, right here in Shererville. So if you're available and want to attend, or send Bob or myself some questions regarding the project, we'd be happy to try and get them answered further.
Well, one of the things, um, as far as, um, the deadline of March thirty-first, that's a Monday, we do have a, uh, we're gonna have a scheduled, uh, public meeting, uh, Wednesday the twenty-sixth, so the twenty-eighth is, is after that, but we will, I'd like to have this on the agenda item on March twenty-sixth, and if, uh, we can't even, to reschedule something for March thirty-first, we can also get also, at that time, if we need additional information, on twenty-eighth.
Okay.
So, with that being said, we're, no discussion, I believe.
One, one more, Congressman. Also, I'd like to make everybody aware, in the public as well, that the congressman has reserved this meeting room, uh, next meeting on the twentieth, at seven fifteen AM, to, uh, make presentation and discuss this topic as well.
Okay. Well, the, uh, hopefully the reporters in the audience here can get that information out there so we can, uh, hopefully get some interested residents out here at seven thirty in the morning, or seven fifteen in the morning, next Thursday. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. President, do you need a motion to defer on this then?
Uh, yeah, just go ahead and do that, just as an item, go ahead.
I'll, I'll make a motion to defer to the, uh, next public meeting.
Motion, a second. Discussion, seeing, hearing none, all favorites, seeing saying aye? Aye, aye. Thank you. Item D is Consider Variants of Use, of Use, excuse me, to Allow U-Haul Truck Rental, uh, property, excuse me, a portion of property located within the general industrial GI zoning district. This is BZI case number fourteen dash two dash seven. Petitioners here are William White, Randy's Graphic, and Cell Screening. Location is at seven forty-eight US forty-one, Unit A, and this comes to us as a favorable recommendation by the BZI three-to-one, with condition limited to seven rental vehicle trailers on site at any given time. Mr. Volpin, would you like to?
This, this case was in front of the BZI, uh, requesting a use experience, uh, last month. The, uh, asking the petitioners here, have any questions for him directly? If you, if you have a perspective where this is at, northbound on forty-one, and right down before the bridge to the west side, uh, there's a couple businesses there, the, uh, there's a Marlowe Place back there, there's Packard, I mean, the tackle auto that's there, and then this is back in the, underneath the building.
Yes, if the petitioners like to make your comments on, um, on this item here?
Well, we're just trying to bring everybody up into Shererville, you know, where they don't have to go farther down the street in the safe fuel economy, many partners, you know, and help the business out, too.
It looks like you're, you're okay with the limit of, uh, seven rental vehicles, yes? Okay, thank you. Pleasure of the council on, um...
Motion to approve, Mr. President.
A motion to approve, second, and a second, any discussion?
President, based upon the, uh, pre-usage about the BZI seed findings and petition.
Second, it's still amended and amended? Any additional discussion at this time regarding this item? Seeing, hearing none, all favorites, seeing saying aye? Aye, aye. All the same sign, motion carries. I'll say, sir. Next item is item F, Consider Variants of Use to Allow Open Storage of Pipe Within a Business Park, BP, zoning district, BZI case number fourteen dash two dash eight. Petitioners Joe Chernak, Midwest Pike, BP, location fifteen, eleven fifty, uh, two Junction Avenue. This comes to us, gentlemen, as a favorable recommendation by the BZI three-to-one, with the condition subject to town engineer review and approval for Storm Range Extension Area. Mr. Volpin?
Mr. Croxton, this was also before the BZI last, last one, um, everybody, this was the Eagle Brook property, which is right on the corner of Junction and Kennedy. Uh, they had, they've got replodding here, too. They actually provided additional railway through Kennedy Avenue, future extension of Kennedy Avenue on their parcel. Midwest Pike, which is across the street, that's exactly where they're, they're actually swarming right on the property now. They're trying to run a performance as much as they practically can with our ordinance, they're addressing storm range, uh, they moved all of the buildings that were there, and so basically just kind of, uh, just, one point reference, they're actually still looking for additional property there. With all of the pipeline work that's going on, I would actually, their business is doing very well right now.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman?
I'd like to, uh, make a motion to approve the favorable recommendation by the BZI, with condition subject to the town engineer review and approval of the Storm Range Extension.
Second motion, and a second, any additional discussion? Seeing, hearing none, all favorites, seeing saying aye? Aye, aye. All the same sign, motion carries. Item G is Consider Approval of Endowments from Indian Environmental Transportation for the town Shererville portion of the client improvement project, which is a thousand, one hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty-four cents. This comes to us from the Utility Board, gentlemen, and needs a town council approval. Pleasure, Council.
Motion to approve.
And a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Seeing, hearing none, all favorites, seeing saying aye? Aye, aye. All the same sign, motion carries. Item H, Consider Bid Award for Two Thousand Thirteen to Two Thousand Fourteen CBPG Project Seaton Park Improvements. Mr. Bensar?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just as a point of reference, Seaton Park is located on Lincolnwood Road, just north of the, uh, St. George Banker Facility, uh, Banker Hall. The proposed project is a CBPG project, which will involve the removal of the existing playground equipment that's currently at the park and replace it with an ADA compliant playground system. Um, there will be two components within the playground system, one component for two to five-year-olds and a separate component for five to twelve-year-olds. Um, again, it'll be, uh, over eighty percent of the components in the playground equipment will be handicap accessible. Um, the surface currently at the park is a woodchip surface that will be replaced with, uh, one of the important place rubberized surface, uh, surfaces for safety. Um, the project also includes new, new park benches. On March seventh, uh, we had a bid opening for the CBPG, uh, park improvements. We had four bidders, uh, the low bidder was Grimmer Construction for two hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars and twenty cents. Uh, we reviewed their bids, and it is in compliance with the CBPG requirements, requirements of bid specifications, so at this time, we would make a recommendation to award the project to Grimmer Construction for two hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars and twenty cents.
Thank you, and what, um, is there a portion of this, uh, how much is being paid out of the CBPG dollar, you know, like, money? CBVG dollar money?
Just over $122,000 in CBG funds, $1,000.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Volpin, when will this start?
Should the counsel go ahead and recommend the award of the approval, we plan to start April 1st, and we have a June 30th completion date.
And Mr. Volpin, where are the, I'm going to ask you, where do the balance of the money come from?
Well, we could look at either the Lake County Gaming Tax, slash Casino Fund, we have money there in corporations, and also in the cable TV fund. We can actually split the cost between the two funds.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. President.
We have a motion to approve the CBV project at Stevens Park improvements, and award the contractor to Grimmer.
Second, with discussion. Question, how, Mr. Volpin or Mr. Bintar, how will the new Stevens Park playground compare to the Rio Park playground?
It's similar, not quite as, it's a lot similar to that.
So it's a, it's a smaller, a little bit smaller version of the same thing?
A smaller version, but it's got some different elements to it, so that they're not identical in any way, but they're, you know, like the slides, but it has all of the toys, it has corporate service, there's some benches around it, so really nice playground. Thank you for the proof. Thanks.
Okay. All favorites saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, my pleasure. Gentlemen, there's an addition to our agenda here, which is page one, I call it, and a few months ago, we met with the local International Association of Firefighters, Local 4279, and it asked us to look at a working agreement for them, and we, an initial resolution acknowledging the local, and I see some of the local members are here now tonight, and, which we have a resolution here before us, that we would like to, I'd like to see us move forward with, and to acknowledge, you know, the work that the local does, you know, in our community for emergency services provided. So, with that being mentioned, the discussion's on the item I added here. We can read a resolution, under that, that's likely, so the, the number, resolution number?
2014.
Bear with me. 2014-4 is a resolution acknowledging town Sheroville International Association of Firefighters, Local 4279 entity, members of services and all related matters. Whereas the town council, the town council, town Sheroville, Lake County, Indiana, here and after the town council, duly elected legislative fiscal body, town Sheroville, you know, local government and municipal corporation for the laws of the state of Indiana. Whereas the town council has heretofore continuously served the residents and citizens of the town Sheroville by providing and having available fire and emergency medical related services, professionals hired as staffing for the town Sheroville Metropolitan Fire Department, to provide the fire and emergency medical services required and necessary for citizens and residents of the town Sheroville. And whereas the town council recognizes the high degree of quality and level of service provided by the professionals of the town Metropolitan Fire Department in rendering of fire and emergency medical related services to the residents and citizens of the town as a consequence of the focus and concentration on this critical and essential function of the unit of government by the town. And whereas the town council is aware and has been cognizant of the membership and affiliation by many firefighters and emergency medical services personnel of the town Metropolitan Fire Department with the town Sheroville International Association of Firefighters, Local 4279, in connection with career and professional veteran purposes. And whereas the town council further recognizes and acknowledges that the high quality and excellent standard of service rendered by the town Metropolitan Fire Department and in its fire and emergency medical related services to the residents and citizens of the town is as a consequence of affiliation and membership by many firefighters and emergency medical services personnel of the town Metropolitan Fire Department and, including with the town Sheroville International Association of Firefighters, Local 4279 entity. And, whereas the town council has concluded as a consequence of its analysis of the high quality, excellent standard of service levels rendered by the firefighters and emergency medical services personnel of the town Metropolitan Fire Department, that the establishment and existence of the town Sheroville International Association of Firefighters, Local 4279 entity is a substantial and positive contributing factor, and is such a high level of service standard rendered. And whereas the town council as a consequence of foregoing and enfurterance of its duties and responsibilities for providing fire and emergency medical related services to the residents and citizens of the town, now determined is appropriate, advisable, and a vested continuing interest of the residents of the town to acknowledge the town Metropolitan Fire Department personnel, and specifically those members affiliated and participating members of the town Sheroville International Association of Firefighters, Local 4279 entity, who are all to be acknowledged for their service excellence and professionalism. Now therefore be resolved by the town council of the town Sheroville, Lake County, Indiana as follows. Section one, that the town Sheroville, by and through the town council hereby acknowledge publicly and expressly the town Sheroville International Association of Firefighters, Local 4279 entity, and its affiliated participating members for the excellence in fire and emergency medical related services rendered heretofore and continually. Is expressly acknowledged that this professional organization and entity and its members are a substantial and continuing reason for the high level of professional fire and emergency medical related services standard provided. Section two, that the town council hereby commits to maintain the excellence and open relationship with the town Sheroville International Association of Firefighters, Local 4279 entity, and its affiliated participating members regarding all related firefighting and emergency medical related services policies and procedure limits the same, and those would substantially affect or impact a provision of fire and emergency medical related services rendered or should be rendered to the residents and citizens of these town Sheroville hereafter. Section three, that the resolution shall take effect in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval by the town council of the town Sheroville, Lake County, Indiana, in confirmation, conformance with applicable law, to be passed this 12th day of March 2014. If you have some other reading?
So, so, Mr. Chairman?
Second. Motion to second, all favorites saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposing sign, motion carries, thank you. Consider, item aye, which is considered donation for dollars versus colors.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Malosky, what has been our very recent donation in this dollars?
Mr. Geswell, for the past several years, I'm seeing it could be up to 10, it's been a thousand dollars, and that's payable from our promotional fund, which is supported from dollars from cable TV and franchise fees.
That being said, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to donate a thousand dollars to dollars versus colors.
Second. Motion to second, any discussion? Seeing now, favorites saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Next item J is considered donation to Sheroville Baseball League. I think we received, received a letter from that, Mr. Volpin?
Yes, Mr. Croxton, we received a letter from Sheroville Baseball, they bought a piece of brewing equipment through their fields, they bought it on a lease purchase arrangement, and their lease purchase contract is for 4,300 plus a year. Last year, we donated $2,500 to the Sheroville League, and they basically have asked for a specific dollar amount, but any assistance that you can give them is appreciated.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Make a motion to donate $2,500 to Sheroville Baseball?
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? There's one discussion, I think that's been a feat that we've given them last year too, because of this.
Yes.
So, with that being said, all favorites saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, my pleasure, over to you. Item K is considered acceptance of donations totaling $1,525.73.
Donations as of today, March 12th, 2014, animal control donations, Hugh Fitness, $100, Nancy Turnbull, $75, Joanne Wildin, $100, also nursery, $19.73, BP Frederick of America Fund, $300, and Lois Griffiths, $20. The total for animal control is $614.73. Dare donations, we have one, Turner Middle School PTO, $840. For reading dog park donations, Deborah Phil, $25. Torch run donations, Sheroville Police Department, $46. Gives us a grand total of donations for today of $1,525.73.
Thank you, Janice, Malosky. Pleasure to be counsel on this acceptance of these donations. Motion, second.
Second.
All favorites saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. At this time, we're going to open business from the floor. Any business from the floor?
Nick Fidelli, Vice President, Local 4279, I just want to say thank you, it's a great work you guys, and look forward to providing excellent service for the town Sheroville.
Thank you very much. I see we have some Boy Scouts in the audience here tonight, would you like to say anything? No? With that being said, this meeting's adjourned, have a good evening.